I now call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. We will start with the flag salute.
Delegations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. We've got our board superintendent operating agreement next. Derek's gonna read it for us.
Yep, we'll get started. Members of the board and the superintendent will work together in good faith as a team in the best interest of students, modeling a willingness to learn together. Board members will recognize and respect the superintendent's responsibility to manage the school district and the direct employees in the district and school matters. Board members will give careful consideration, listening to all perspectives, to all issues brought to the board by individuals in district leadership. The board may only make decisions at properly called meetings. Board members recognize that individual members have no authority to take individual action in policy or district and school administrative matters unless so authorized by board vote. Board members must follow the chain of responsibility and communicate directly with the superintendent when a question arises, or a concern or complaint is voiced by a staff member, student, parent, or community member. Board members will endeavor to communicate directly with the superintendent on board chair prior to meetings of the board to address questions and/or concerns about agenda items. Board members and the superintendent recognize that good answers often require preparation in advance of a board meetings. When a board member and/or superintendent has an individual concern, he or she must communicate one-on-one with any member of the board superintendent team as appropriate. In the interest of public transparency and full, robust debate, board members will endeavor to actively engage and contribute to board discussions and to share their perspectives on topics before the board. Full participation from members in advance of a board supports the board in making informed, well-considered decisions on important district matters.
Thank you, Derek. All right, so moving on, we will move to the agenda review. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the agenda is published with one edit. Under 11 discussion items, I move to add, to move the election discussion to our first item for that section.
Second it.
It has been moved and seconded to switch the order of discussion items, moving 11D to the top of the discussion items. Discussion? All right, let's vote.
Owen?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, so we'll move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for that?
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda as presented. Go ahead and call the vote, Debbie.
Owen?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, we have our student representatives, Maddox Fessler and Addie Kruger. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Maddox Fessler.
And my name's Addie Kruger.
And we are the ASB School Board Representatives from Silverton High School. Last school board meeting, we talked about homecoming and all the events we had going on. It was a successful week for us, and we were super proud of all the hard work that the student body, ASB, teachers and administrators put in.
Now we are working on continuing to build spirit in Silverton High School by celebrating all of the awesome things that the school is doing, ranging from clubs and activities to athletics to our academic achievements.
We are also working on our Tree of Giving fundraisers that we have kicked off. We have a lot of events for Tree of Giving that ASB plans. We do different fundraisers at school for the student body such as teacher karaoke, Just Dance competition, spelling bee, et cetera. We also have some community events that we would like to invite you all to. Those are our macho volleyball and our new event, the Fox-a-thon.
We would like to invite you all to one of our tournaments, one of our traditions of Tree of Giving, macho volleyball. This is an annual fundraiser that will take place after school, December 6th, at 5:45 PM at Silverton High School in both gyms. It will cost $3 for admissions, plus we will be selling concessions. Teams will compete to be crowned the macho champion.
We are introducing a new fundraiser for Tree of Giving, and we can't wait to kick this event off as the first ever Fox-a-thon. The Fox-a-thon is a 5K jog slash walk throughout the Silverton High School campus. All community members are welcome and encouraged to come participate. Students at SHS are $5 to participate, adults are $10, kids are $8, and children three and under are free. The Fox-a-thon will take place Saturday, December 9th. The 5K will tour the campus and have fun activities slash stops along the way.
The Silver Falls Public Library is creating a team advisory board, and we will have many students joining to represent the young voices of our community.
We are also celebrating how many new clubs we have established here at the high school. Our new clubs include chess club, skate club, best buddies, outdoor club, environmental club, robotics, and esports. Students are all so excited to get involved, and our new clubs have been meeting once a month during AG.
The successes at Silverton High School have been ones to celebrate. The student body has been putting in a lot of effort, and as a leadership team, we can't wait to celebrate all of the good that has been going on.
From our fall athletic programs, all reaching the playoffs, and football playing in the semifinal game on Friday, to our fine arts team and their performances, to the speech and debate team and their success of one of the biggest tournaments that took place at SHS, to the clubs and activities that have been putting on events and having huge success, such as the blood drive or our CTE programs and the accolades they have recently won.
We couldn't be more happy for our community, and we look forward to the continued success of not only Silverton High School but of all our schools. Thank you and go Foxes!
Thank you guys so much for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a school and principal report, and we're gonna go with Silverton High School and preschool. Sione Thompson and April Cote are going to be presenting.
Yes.
Okay. Hi.
Hello. Madam Chair, members of the board, superintendent, thank you for having us. We brought a lot of experts today, so we'll have more than our preschool. So we'll just go over a couple of slides, one point of data that I wanted to put up there if we could. This is not it, let's go backwards. There we go. All right, so by the numbers, so see, these are some of our indicators of success, both from our state and ODE. Our enrollment 1972, that's fluctuating up and down. Even as early as last week, we've been getting calls from families asking how to come into the district, so very, very excited that, we think that's gonna fluctuate and hopefully it's gonna continue to go up. On track to graduate, an indicator for our ninth grade on track to graduate, 95%. We have our on-time graduation. Of course, those two are confusing. If you guys have any questions about that, please call me directly. We're gonna, I'm up in a breeze through this. Our five-year completion, very excited, 96%. Those are our completers. Took a little bit longer than four years. And then our year-to-date attendance rate at 91%. And we're working on that diligently with every seat matters, every minute matters, every body matters. So we're continuously going through a campaign and re-engaging our students that we haven't seen. Some of that attendance drop rate is our 10-day drop of kiddos that we just can't get a hold of right now, though we're continuing that. And what you see is our participants, the 291, that's from our last year, that's the seniors, and then 123 CTE concentrators. Those are folks that are gonna graduate with some kind of concentration, and we're really excited about that, looking to expand that. So we'll see those numbers go up tremendously. Over the last couple of years, you've seen me and my team come here and we shared kind of a structure, an overall structure of the vision and how we plan to implement that. And I think what's exciting tonight is all of the hard work that you guys have put in and our superintendent has put in to dedicate those and allocate resources to the high school. You'll see the successes and the fruits of that laboring today, so. We're gonna start off with academics, and then we'll go into athletics, and we'll get some of our experts over here, and we'll kinda just do a round robin. People will just come in and present. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, I'm Clarissa Bay, and I'm a science department coordinator at the high school. I wanted to share a little bit about our work that we've been doing in the science department with our projection maps and our unit mapping and our assessments. This year has proven a little bit of a challenge for us as we've shifted to a complete block schedule. So we're currently working on modifying our projection maps to fit our block schedule. What we have found to be the most valuable tool for us for unit mapping has been the work that we've done in the past couple of years, just creating unit maps that are useful for new teachers that come in. So this year, we have a brand-new teacher, a teacher that has transferred from the middle school, and we have a teacher on maternity leave, so we're a little discombobulated, but the unit maps have proven to be a very helpful tool for our teachers. We've valued time with our administrators coming in and looking at our reflection work with our unit maps to make sure that we're, that they're a useful tool for us as we work. Our assessment process has been effective as well in creating assessments for our physical science and biology courses that meet our standards and are manageable for our students, so we've enjoyed that process. And one of the things I'm excited about personally for science is that this year we've transferred our STEM club structure, I guess, to one of our math teachers. I've always done it, and so we have a brand-new math teacher that's providing some opportunities for students to engage in math and science activities.
Good evening, Natasha Belikov, I'm the math department coordinator here at the high school, and just kinda give you an update of where we are with our curriculum mapping and in that process. So our projection maps for all of our core classes are complete. We have some revisions planned for the spring with just the block schedule changes going from an all-day Monday and then the other two days. We're implementing the recently adopted Oregon math standards and are in transition to the two-plus-one model, which includes a shift from the traditional second-school-year geometry to a semester geometry and then a semester of data reasoning and probability. Our unit maps are for our Algebra I courses. We've been actually working on those for the last three years, and they are complete. Our assessments are complete, and I think we've received feedback on almost all of it for our Algebra I course, so it's, our Algebra I course is pretty tight. We're just implementing the one semester geometry course, so we're working on those projection maps and unit maps, but we're a couple weeks ahead of the game in those. Like I said, all of our Algebra I assessment plans and assessments and all the elements for those are complete, so we're on track for all of those. Some of the hurdles that we've had are just instructional materials. The standards were adopted in 2021, publishers were not ready for that, so we spent last year kinda looking through curriculum and decided not to adopt, but we still are working with materials from 2007, which are, that's a little bit of a challenge. Our teachers have been working really hard to kinda put those materials together and just look at open-source resources and everything like that. But we have really appreciated the support that we've gotten with the extra time that we need to put in for that research and the time to do all this planning. One of our big celebrations this year is just having some time to work with other departments and planning out some cross-curricular projects, like using data that we collect in our biology classes for our sophomores, and then using that data directly in the data reasoning course. So we're looking to kinda put in together more of those projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Roan McCurry, and I'm here to represent the band program. I'm the band president for this year. So far this year, the band, drum line, and color guard have put together a fall marching show. They performed part of the show at the McNary Invitational this, in September, and then we performed twice at our home football games. The band, drum line, and color guard also marched in the homecoming parade on October 12th. Annabelle Gallardo auditioned for and was selected to play in the All-State Symphonic Band in January on flute. Cal Sheldon auditioned for and was selected to play in the Western International Band Clinic Festival to be held up in Seattle this upcoming weekend on OVO. The bands performed along with the choirs for a fall concert on October 19th, and the bands will perform a holiday concert on December 14th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Carlo McWhalfresh. I am a junior at Silverton High, and I'm here to represent the choir program. Recently, we have been able to pull off a lot of things. On October 19th, we did a joint concert with the band, and it turned out very well. Recently, we've had our younger choirs, they were able to go to the Festival of Voices, and they were able to go get some instruction from other choir teachers there, and they all benefited a lot. And then the next day, or a few days later, we had the, our concert choir went to Western Oregon, and we did a kind of a choir mock festival where we got to sing in front of some other choirs and listen and get some feedback from a teacher there. And recently, me, as well as Helen Yancy, Eloise Kelly, and Roman Pack, we were all able to go and participate in the Wellness Master Chorus, their Veterans Concert that we did just this last weekend, and that was, it went really good, and we were able to get some good instruction from people there. And then we're planning for our December concert right now that'll be on the 17th. That's all, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not quite as tall as these previous people. I'm Gabby Roth, I'm a senior, and I am here as the communications captain for the Silverton Speech and Debate Team coached by Katie Cantrowitz. Our last competition was the Sid Fox Invitational on November 4th at our own school, hosting 24 schools, 263 competitors, and a total of 345 people. In the novice division, our team won two third places and one second place, and in the open division, our team won one second place and one tournament champion in their event. I was also advised to mention that said tournament champion was me. Our next competition is the Clackamas Holiday Edge in December with congressional debate on the first and all other events on the second. As always, in order to compete at any tournament, we do need to bring a certain amount of volunteer judges, so if anyone would be interested, please contact Ms. Cantrowitz. Thank you.
Congratulations, Gabby.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Maddie Rich. I'm a senior, and I'm currently president of Silver Masked Thespian Society, the theater club at the high school. And I currently play Agnes in our current show, She Kills Monsters. In the show, my character's younger sister, Tilly, is killed in a car crash. After her death, Agnes gets into Tilly's D&amp;D module and starts to play the game to get to know her better. To know the rest, you'll have to come see it. Our shows are November 16th, and they're through the 19th, and the 19th is a matinee at 2:00 PM. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Journey starts here, starts right here. A great man once told me, if you have people, if you've done the preparation, you go out and you perform. Guess what, fellas? In January, most of you made the choice to get up early before everybody else. You woke up with the birds, you woke up with the animals, you went into dark room, and you prepared for now. And now's when it's paid in. Now's the time to get. Yeah, you got a great opponent, a great night, great night for football, don't forget to just go have fun and play Silverton football. Fast, physical, in your face. Don't forget to have fun. It's about your brothers, enjoy it with them. Get after those guys, get after those dragons. Let's go.
Now that we got ourselves hyped up, I'm Emmett Limbert, a senior from Boys Varsity Soccer Program, also a captain. I'm just here to talk about our previous season. I think this season was very successful, not only in the sense of win-to-loss ratio, goals scored, and achievements, but I think in the way that we've learned as a team. From breaking records on the team, our top goal scorer broke the school record for most goals scored in a season, and our goalkeeper broke the record for most saves in a game. Yeah, I think that we were very successful, and we had fun while doing it. Yeah, just, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Helen Schmitz. Hi, my name is Helen Schmitz, and I'm here talking about girls volleyball. I'm a junior varsity captain. This year, our varsity team finished fourth in the toughest 5A league and finished 11th in state. We ended up getting taken out of the playoffs by the runners-up in state. Our overall record was 16-8, and this year was the start of a new era with our program getting a whole new coaching staff ran by Dr. Barnes. This year, we focused on developing our program as a whole, and it was very successful. Our JV team went 14-4 in league, our JV orange team went 14-1, and our JV silver team went 12-4. Our varsity team had six girls get all-league honors. Alexis Howery and Farrah Keith got first-team all-league. Olivia Boyd and myself got second-team all-league, and Gracie Jensen and Ella Howery got honorable mentions. One of our varsity seniors, Alexis Howery, is going on to play D1 at University of Washington next year, and we are looking forward to see what next year holds for us. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name's Bryn Olvin, and I'm a senior and a captain for the varsity girls soccer team. We celebrated the end of a great season by making it to the second round of playoffs for the first time since 2018. Our season consisted of an overall record of eight, six, and two, and a league record of six and two. One of our most exciting games was beating Crescent Valley for the first time since 2015. I want to recognize our wonderful head coach, Renee Cantrell, who received the Coach of the Year award. I also want to recognize our players that were awarded all-conference titles. For first team, Marley Wertz and Kaila Buckley. Second team, Sidney King, Gemma Mulick, and Ally Manzer. And for honorable mention, Addie Smith and Elise Doyle. Our keeper, Ella Lulich, also received the Goalie of the Year award. It was a fantastic season for varsity, finishing third in our league and tying for fifth in state. Our JV team had a record of 10, 2, and 1, and finished first in their league. Overall, both teams had an amazing season, and our program is already looking forward to next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lauren Ortega, senior captain on the cross-country team. Our season was really successful this year. We had our conference championship a little over a month ago. The boys JV placed fourth, and girls JV placed second. Girls Varsity placed fourth, and boys Varsity placed fifth. The girls varsity fourth place earned us a spot at the state meet, which is the third consecutive year that we've got a state qualification, and the first time in 30 years that we got a qualification three years in a row. So that was really exciting for our girls program. At the state meet, the girls placed 12th overall, which is the highest we've placed in 30 years, so a very good meet. Along with the girls varsity team, JD Arthur placed fifth at our conference championship, which earned him an individual qualification for the state meet. He represented Silverton very well at the state meet, so we're really proud of him. He also broke the school record for the 5K this year, which doesn't happen very often, so we're really proud of him. That kinda just bodes well for the future of our program. Overall, very successful season with lots of individual improvement from everybody across all the teams, and we're really excited for the future of our program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Sawar Tini, I'm a junior captain of the football team, and I just wanna say, our season has gone really great, and yes, like Maddox said, we play a game Friday. We're currently 11-0, and ended the season outright league champs, and along with that, we had pretty much a whole clean sweep of all-league awards, including four juniors getting Player of the Year, including myself getting Offensive Player of the Year, Eli Willis getting Defensive Lineman of the Year, Brash Anderson getting Offensive Lineman of the Year, and Daniel Kinsey getting Defensive Player of the Year. It was a very successful season, and we have a great coaching staff who teaches us more than just the game and how to be great men and leaders growing up, and it's been a very successful season. And yeah, it was just, just it, so, yeah. And then winter sports, we have, we got boys and girls basketball, tryouts I think are actually happening right now, and then we got girls and boys swim, and then girls and boys wrestling. That is all coming up. Thank you for your time.
Hey, Sawyer.
Thank you.
Sawyer, when's your next game?
Friday at 7:00 at McNary.
Thank you.
Versus Mountain View.
Hello, everyone. I'm happy to be here tonight to share with you a little bit about Silver Falls Preschool. My name is April Cote, and I am the preschool leader here at the high school. So over the summer, the preschool has moved into its new beautifully renovated house here on the high school campus. That move has been great for a handful of reasons, but one of which, the preschool has been able to expand its enrollment from one classroom to two classrooms, so we're able to offer a preschool program to our community. And we do currently have five slots open, so if anybody knows anybody with a preschool student in our community or surrounding community, please pass on our info. We'd love to see our program at full enrollment. The second great reason for the move to the high school is that it's allowed us to develop a new career and technical education program in the field of early childhood education. So I've been working over the summer with Shemechana to develop a CTE program focusing on, you know, teaching our high school students all about the field of teaching and hopefully inspiring them to be future teachers themselves. So if you have any further questions about the preschool, if you wanna come and visit the preschool and take a little tour, you can go ahead and contact me, my name is April Cote again, or you can contact Sione as well, I'm sure we could schedule some time to do that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again, everybody. My name is Maddox Fessler, I'm a senior at Silverton High School.
And I'm Eric Ruppé, and I'm also a senior at Silverton High School.
And we're here to talk to you guys about IT hardware and our A+ certification.
An A+ certification is an industry standard for tech support roles.
Students learning electrical engineering, coding, networking with an eye towards building a student tech support team for the school.
Students learning open-source software programming directly tied to hardware creation and diagnosis.
Emphasis on soft skills, SEL, including interpretation of complex theories to filter out jargon to make it easily communicated to end-users and clients, how to engage with difficult clients. We want to thank you guys so much for your time. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Kyle Dumer, a freshman.
I'm Logan Semar, an senior.
And again, I'm Eric Ruppé, and I'm also a senior.
In esports, we learn social.
We learn social, emotional learning, planning, production, broadcasting, coaching, recruitment, and technology.
We've also learned a lot about tilting, which is a state of mental or emotional confusion or frustration in which a player adopts a less-than-optimal strategy, usually resulting in the player becoming over-aggressive. So we've been learning a lot about how to control tilt and not tilt so we can have good games and we can perform well. So we have highlighted and established the importance of teamwork and community in esports management. We emphasize learning and cooperative play to create psychological supports and positive emotional growth. We have created more opportunity to be a part of the Silverton High School culture, resulting in 40 weekly active students in esports. And we engage students in a traditional team sport. And we engage students in a traditional team sport environment, so no one's left out and no one's feeling bad. Yeah, that's it. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
I'm Shane Johnston from Robotics. I'm a sophomore right now. This is a robot using the pieces that we have to build our robots in the robotics class. In robotics, we learn both how to program and drive robots, and we also learn how to work as a team. With this robot, without the gears all working together, it wouldn't be able to drive, or it wouldn't be able to turn the arm like this and look very helpful. But with the gears working together, it can wave the flag and it can move, which is why it's useful as a robot. Just like that, we learn to work together as different gears in a team so that we can function efficiently and build robots, and then program and drive them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Scott Towery, I'm one of the advisors here at Silverton High School, and it's a privilege this evening to bring these five individuals up here. This year, we attended the National FFA Convention, and just a couple things before I let them talk and tell you, just because I'm just extremely proud of their accomplishments back there. When you look at FFA itself, it's the largest youth group organization at the high school level. There's nine hundred thousand kids across the nation in FFA, and these individuals, I did the math and I looked at it, in the last, I've taken twenty teams back to nationals since I've been here seventeen years. In the last fifty-three years, we've had two teams that has walked on the stage at Nationals, and there's one team back there that was one of those teams. And so extremely proud of what they've accomplished, and then also the agri-science group was also sixth in the nation. So I'm gonna let them talk about that, but I just had to share a little bit about some statistics about their accomplishments because it was truly amazing to be able to see them do that, so.
Hello, everyone. My name is Audrey Gardner.
Hi, I'm Kate Kinsey. This year, currently, we are both juniors, and last year, in the spring of our sophomore year, the two of us in our ag skills class decided to conduct an agri-science project, which is like an agriculture-slash-science kind of a deal project. And the project that we decided to conduct was about different sources of lighting on plants and what would be the most efficient and effective. And we tested LED and incandescent, and were able to see that because of the different wavelengths, as well as light and heat intensities, that LED was the most efficient.
And so we decided to take this to our state convention in the spring of last year, and so we created like a big poster board with a bunch of pictures and information on there, as well as like a big written report that had a detailed explanation of our experiment and our findings and everything. And we ended up getting first in state in our division in plant systems, and which made us eligible to compete at the national level.
So to compete at the national level, it was actually an interview that we did a couple months ago in September, and this was, we knew we were in the top ten after they had judged our written reports, and yeah, this interview was like fifteen minutes long, and they just asked us different questions about our project, and yeah.
And then about two weeks ago, we went back to Indiana to the national convention, and we got to walk across the stage in front of over seventy-two thousand people, and we ended up getting sixth in the entire nation, and so it was really fun.
Yep, and as a result, we both got these gold pins to put on our jacket that just, I guess, showed the hard work we put into this project, and yeah, so yeah, it was a really good experience for both of us.
Congratulations.
Hi, guys. My name is Jenna Schurter. I am president here at this chapter and at the district level. I'm a senior here, and I competed on the ag sales team. I've been doing ag sales since freshman year along with Joanna, and just to explain a little bit of the competition, it's a four-part competition. So two of the four parts is an individual sale. So we were assigned a product at the national level that we had to sell to a set of judges. Within this, we had to build rapport, be very friendly, and make a couple jokes to get the product sold. And then a second part of that was customer service. So within that, we had a problem, and we had to solve that problem. So we were given a sheet of paper, and we had to solve the problem for that customer.
Hello, my name is Joanna Nordham. I also competed on the ag sales team, and I'm gonna explain a little bit about the third part of the competition, which would be the written test. This was a hundred, this was worth a hundred and twenty points of the overall, of your overall score, and it consisted of multiple choice, true and false, and then an essay questions, and these all showcased your ability to understand all scopes of the selling process and being a marketing salesman in a real career.
My name is David Tribbet, and I am the vice president in our chapter, and this is my third and final year of competing in ag sales. And the fourth component of this competition was the team event, which is where, after given a scenario, we evaluated potential wants, concerns, needs, objections of the particular scenario that the judges might have, and then we went in front of a panel of two judges, and they asked us questions about why did we ask these specific questions rapport, and other important components of the sales process, and along with just general product information, to evaluate how well we understood the product.
I want to congratulate Rebecca Nordham. She is not with us tonight. She is at college, but she competed with us, and we'd just like to say thank you for our time, and it was very unexpected for us to win, but we put in the hard work, so thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Hello, I'm Megan Fisher.
My name is Abby Talent, and I am a senior.
And my name's Chris Bull, and I'm also a senior.
We are members of the Protective Services Program, which has helped us explore careers and pointed us to careers as firefighter, paramedic, and paramedic nursing.
Through this class, we have learned about career opportunities and opportunities to volunteer in our community with the skills we have learned in class.
This month, we are finishing our Emergency Medical Responders Certification through the Oregon Health Authority in Silverton Fire District.
This means that we could be the next ones to show up at your door if you call 911.
I am also enrolled along with eight other students to join the Silverton Fire Academy, and we will complete our firefighter training in April.
While we still might be high schoolers, we are learning skills that will largely impact our community, and we're so thankful that we were able to learn these here at Silverton High School.
Now, Chrisa will be demonstrating how we don our firefighter gear in class.
In class, we are timed on this skill, and we try to get it under a minute. When we check, we want to make sure that she has everything on and that there is no Velcro showing everything is covered.
Very good.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chloe, and I'm a senior here. I'm currently in my third year of culinary arts, and I've also been able to complete Culinary I, II, and III. Through all the culinary classes I've completed, not only has it introduced me to new friendships that share the same love for cooking I have, but it's also expanded my knowledge within the kitchen. And with each unit, from knife skills to safety and sanitation, and all the way to learn the different cuts of meats, Ms. Emmert has given me and a lot of other students the ability to apply these in our own kitchen at home, and hopefully in our future. Here in culinary arts, we take our skills to the next level, and we like to provide for other people. We do catering events such as making treats for the daddy-daughter dance, or we've also supplied cupcakes in the past for all the AGs here at the high school. And this has taught us how to manage our time under a deadline, showed the importance of giving back to the community, and it's even brought us students closer through all the chaos, because it does get pretty chaotic in the kitchen sometimes. Our culinary program gives students opportunities, no matter what level they start out in, start out in the kitchen, and it sparks interest in, to those who may not have thought of this as a career path in their future, and this is why I think our culinary program is very valuable.
Thanks so much.
Madam Chair, Board Member, Superintendent, we went well over our time. It was worth it.
Absolutely.
As you can see, the diverse talents, I'd be remiss if we didn't, in the spirit of thanks during this time of thanks, thank all of those that came before us that sat in your chairs to make the decisions so today is possible. Thank your communities that voted you in so you can sit here and be our North Star so we can move forward. Thanks to our district leadership team for all the hard work. This is the fruit of all of your guys' labor, and I greatly appreciate that I get to come here every day and do what I do. So thank you, guys, and I'm sure we don't have any questions, but if you do, you can call me, you don't want to find me. Thanks, Sione.
Thanks, Sione. Wonderful presentation. All right, moving forward, we have the Silver Falls Education Association, and I think that's gonna be an online presentation.
Yes.
There we go. Hello, school board.
Hi, Emily.
Hey. It was awesome to hear everything that high school has done. Oh, no, my camera just cut out again.
Yeah, Emily, you're a little echoey. I'm not sure if that, I'm not sure where that's happening.
How about now?
Yeah, still echoey. We can, we can move forward, just understand that it might be better to go a little slower on your speaking speed.
Understandable. Well, it was awesome to hear all those high school updates. Some of those are my kids that I've had in middle school, so good to see what they've done. Hello, especially to our new school board members that I have not had the chance to meet yet. My name is Emily Rayo, and I am the SFPA Secretary this year. I also teach fifth through eighth grade social studies and leadership out at Butte Creek. I am pleased to say that things are much quieter addressing the board this November than they were last year. However, we did want to take this time to address the bond. It saddens our hearts to see the bond fail, and we are very grateful to all the community members, SFSD employees, and school board members who worked hard on this bond and to make sure the community understood what they were voting for. Our teachers, we will continue to give everything that we have to provide the best education possible for our kiddos, while the district and the school board be moved to forward with some sort of Plan B. We always want to put our students first, and we'll always do what is best for them. And that is all we have tonight.
Thank you for those sentiments, Emily. We appreciate it, and thank you for coming tonight and addressing us.
Thanks for letting me come virtually, I appreciate it.
Okay, moving forward, we have public comment, and if you'd like to speak during public comment and are attending virtually, use the raise hand feature in Zoom. If you're attending in person, please approach the public comment table in front of the board, and we generally go kind of back and forth between the in-person folks and the online folks. We're glad you're here and welcome you to address the board with your ideas, concerns, or compliments. Please keep the following in mind: If you wish to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized by the board chair. If attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature within Zoom. For the record, please provide your name and relationship to the district. Please keep individual remarks to three minutes. If speaking as a representative on behalf of a group of three or more, comment time will be extended to five minutes. A second public comment period will occur later in the meeting that is specific to discussion and action items only. The board will not hear complaints against individual district staff or board members during public comment. Please understand that the board's primary role is to listen, and you likely will not receive an immediate response. Finally, remember, we all model the way for our students and ask that you share your thoughts respectfully, and in accordance with the Silver Falls School District Board decorum agreement. Is there somebody in the audience who would like to approach the table? Go ahead, Jean. And I'm gonna ask you four questions. First, I'm gonna ask you to identify yourself and your relationship to the district. You can sit, you can sit down. And then I would like you to say if you're speaking, or what topic you're speaking on, and then if you represent yourself or a group. And that, those answers will not count as part of your three minutes.
Pardon me?
Those, those answers will not count as part of your three minutes. So when you're done with those, those questions, answering those questions, that's when your time will start.
Thank you. I'm Jean Pfeifer. I'm a citizen of Silverton my entire life. I was on the budget committee for twenty-five years, and most of the time, I was the chairman. I was also chairman of the high school relocation in ninety-three and ninety-nine, so I'm very knowledgeable as to what's going on. I'm a design belt specialist. I'm speaking on my own behalf, and I don't know if there's something else you want to...
Yeah, topic.
Well, the topic is the proper expansion of the school district and accommodate the students to the future. So I'm ready to start. Okay, so we just got through a bond election. The bond failed. Predictably, I would have said the bond would fail even by greater numbers had it not been that we were using terminology like condemned in the advertisement of it. We have certain facts that we need to pay attention to. I have a copy, and I will share it to all the board members, not tonight, but I'll send it to you, of the ballot measure for when the initial high school relocation occurred. The ballot measure was very specific and laid out what was going to happen. It said that the phase one of the high school was gonna be about fifteen million. We spent sixty. The next phase was gonna be maybe twelve to fourteen million. Kyle Palmer's committee spent fifty-three million. So we wonder why people are upset about spending more money with this going on. So the things that I'd like to emphasize, there are three of them: History, sustainable example, and facts. Right now, we're talking about, we're in the bond measure, we're talking about tearing down about a hundred twenty thousand square feet, not counting the gym, but all that was about a hundred twenty thousand square feet. That is a usable product that has value to it. We're using much of the building now. We have the certain core that is the old nineteen thirty-eight Slater Building, but the Slater Building is fixable. I had three independent professionals go through it. They said that they gave reports, you have copies of them. The reports indicate that the buildings are fixable, we just simply need to fix what needs to be fixed. There is some upgrading that needs to be done. In my personal opinion, we could get that done for twenty million, maybe a little bit more. I also said that we should have ten million for the outlying schools to do the same thing, to fix some things that need to be fixed, and maybe five million in contingency. But we need to be doing this. We should be talking together. I reached, I reached to at least one of you in the last few days, and that was rejected. I know that some of you are reaching out otherwise, which is good. So we, we have a real problem if we tear down Slater, which has a capacity for a hundred, for twelve hundred students. The new building proposes a capacity of four fifty. The current population of that school in the district is two, four hundred and thirty-nine. So, so we're, we're not even putting enough space in there to accommodate that, and we're spending an outrageous amount of money, whereas we can do it reasonably and take care of all the things we need to do. In addition, have room for when it comes up for the new high school, we're going to have to expand it, and we're not taking that into account whatsoever with this current bond. We're gonna spend a hundred forty-two million dollars and be sitting there with no... We're going to spend a hundred forty-two million dollars and be sitting there with no more than what we have now.
Time.
Where we could be doing much better. So I encourage that we get together and try to meet. We need to meet, we, we don't want to have an independent, your side and our side.
Jean, we've got to, we've got to move, we've got to move on.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there somebody online waiting?
There are no hands raised online.
Anybody else in the room want to approach the table? All right, we will move on then. Administrator and staff reports, Superintendent, update is first. Scott Drew?
Thank you, Jennifer and Board. I'm going to wait for Daniel to pull up a couple of slides and then we'll start. Well, this, this is the first board meeting after uh, election day. And although we're really disappointed in the outcome, it doesn't mean for one second that we're not a hundred percent focused on our district's needs and our strategic plan. And even though the bond was one-third of our focus this year, by no means means it isn't still a focus of one-third of our strategic plan. And that's a five-year strategic plan. And um, election day or no election day, the needs of our facilities are still present and they're still pressing. And so, we know that we have work in front of us. Earlier this fall, I sat in front of you, went over my goals for, for this year. And one of them was to pass a general obligation bond. And under there, I gave two scenarios because it's pass or, or no pass. And so, since we didn't pass, we will be taking a step back, reevaluating our situation. But we will be moving forward. That I can promise you. So, uh, I also mentioned to you as a board, I gave you a heads up that uh, I would be attending an after-action meeting in business. It's called a post-mortem meeting. After a big project is finished, you want to know what went well, what didn't go well, what would you do again? And all of that type of thing. Spent a couple of hours uh, meeting about that this afternoon. And, and I will be prepared at the board work session to present the board with sort of what we found. Uh, right now, I have a lot of notes that need to be interpreted. And I can put that into sort of a cogent presentation for you all uh, so we can continue with our discussion, even though I know your discussion will start tonight. We went over a lot of data, a lot of precinct data. I, if I were going to use one word to describe that, I would say sobering. Uh, so it will take me a little while to go through that, uh, collect our thoughts and, and put them down in, in a, so that we can approach this scientifically. But I will be back in two weeks to share that report with you. So, um, I also just wanted to mention that your, you have a discussion item tonight in front of you. And I, I think it's really important that, that our public hear and that, uh, that we all hear the, the true heart of the board. Where, where are you on this socially and emotionally? What challenges do you see? Uh, that sort of thing, keeping it at a very high level. And then uh, we can come back to it in the, in the next couple of weeks. That, that certainly won't be the last discussion that we're going to have. Again, our, our issues with facilities have been known for a very long time. They are present uh, as we speak and they are pressing. And so, uh, with that, I will go and turn it over to questions if you have them. But wanted to um, give any extra time back to my colleague, Leslie Roach, who has a few reports to present as well.
I missed the detail in that, will you be reporting back to us at the next regular meeting?
Board work session.
Work session.
Yes.
Thank you.
And as we know, the work session's an appropriate place to do that, where we can get all the, all the facts out there and, and can have answers for many of your questions.
All right.
Any other questions, comments? Nope.
Leslie?
Thank you, Clicker. It is time for the required annual report for the SIA plan um, for ODE. So SIA is the Student Investment Account. It is a state-funded grant. And um, the reporting cycle is a little odd because we're just doing our year-end report for twenty-two, twenty-three at the end of this month. So I'm going to go over this quickly. There's a lot of words on all of these slides because it is a template from ODE that's required. Um, it will be posted on the website with a report. So it asks three questions. Um, what changes in behavior, actions, policies or practices have you observed related to your SIA implementation? And um, I would say that the uh, changes that we've seen the most are around um, Sequoia Falls, continuing Sequoia Falls uh, for our high school students, maintaining counselors and social workers throughout the district, and continuing to invest in our implementation of guaranteed and viable curriculum, which you heard about in the high school report. The second question is around barriers or challenges to implementation. Um, one of the largest barriers we're experiencing is this odd year-end time. Um, our business department was having to do the final report for the SIA grant, which is rather large, at the same time that they were going through an audit and the high school success year-end report. And the state aligning federal and state uh, year-end times is a barrier that many school districts across the state are experiencing. And we just want to be really transparent in that challenge with the state. And then the third question is um, about ongoing community engagement. Uh, we really uh, do a lot of focal groups and workshop-style meetings, school board presentations. We also do an annual youth truth survey uh, for students, staff members and parents. And so, that's the way we're doing community engagement right now. And we are hopefully working to form more advisory committees and get more personal feedback. And then the fourth question is um, just, what are you prioritizing into, for your plan for the future? We've already talked about our plan for this year. Um, really moving forward towards literacy and language, those are two student focal groups that we really want to see our student data increase. And I think that's the end of the required slides. So that's the annual SIA report. We do this every November and we turn it into the state. Um, again, it'll be posted on the website and you'll have all of these answers to read at your pleasure, if you are interested. Any questions about SIA before I move on to my next topic? Okay, um, the next topic is Lori Wire was uh, going to be here presenting and I am taking her place. She is the High School English Language Development Teacher. Um, the English Language Development Teacher Team has been looking at materials to move their work forward. And after reviewing um, multiple materials, the secondary team, so for grades six through twelve, um, would like to move forward with an independent adoption for systematic ELD. And um, they, Lori was going to be here to talk about her experience tonight, but she was not available. So it's just me saying um, this is, that what the team is moving forward. This would be grant-funded, so we're waiting to get our grant funding approved. And then we would be moving forward with the purchase and some training for our secondary teachers. And those are my agenda items for the evening.
Any questions for Leslie? I have a question. So systematic ELD is in the secondary? I've used it as elementary. I didn't know it was secondary, so just curious. Thank you. Okay, I think if there are no more questions, we will move on to our um, discussion items. And we adjusted the agenda to do the election discussion first. And again, this is a really um, you know, our first, our first chance to talk about how to move forward. Um, certainly not our last chance. Um, and we don't have specific data that, you know, Scott's going to provide for us and I think that's okay. We are just going to give our, our initial thoughts and, and listen to what one another has to say. I know that I'm here with a really open mind. I have my own thoughts, but I also want to hear what everybody else has to say because I'm sure um, our discussion and our ideas will be richer um, when we, when we truly listen to each other and, and mull over what um, what thoughts each of us bring. So with that, would anybody like to start the discussion?
I can start. Um, I think first off, uh, just a huge thank you to everyone over the time that worked on the bond, the bond committee, uh, that was out there campaigning for one side or the other. And so just a, a thank you for all the work and the effort that went into it initially. I do want to thank our community as a whole for making your wishes known through us through your voting. I think many of us were really looking forward to the opportunity of solving a lot of the problems that we had in the district with the passing of the bond. And now we're left to deal with, you know, the, the same problems and figuring out a way, how do we move forward? So I think, you know, the initial uh, thought process is go back to the drawing board, start looking at, you know, what is going to be critical? What problems do we have to solve immediately? And figuring out a way to move forward to, to solve those problems. And I think we're probably going to have some tough decisions to make as a board and, and what that looks like. You know, as I looked at the results, I think one of the things um, that I don't know if people understood is, I think they understood what the bond represented, if it passed. But I don't think they had full understanding of some of the questions or some of the decisions that we're going to have to make as a board moving forward. So um, I, I don't think that part was necessarily laid out the best as far as like, if it fails, we still have these massive issues that we're going to have to figure out a way to address and what that looks like. And so I think that was, um, it's a kind of, you know, the recent days reflected on that. Uh, you know, something that, that could have been done better. I'm a little bit re-energized after we had all the students come through today. And I think that reminds us of why we're here as adults, making these tough decisions and figuring out a best way to make sure that our facilities are operational, that represent the uh, care and love that we have for our students. Um, and, and just refreshed by hearing how successful and passionate on a variety of different topics our young people are. So uh, those are just some initial thoughts of take a pause, figure out what's critical and then developing plans to move forward.
Thanks, Derek.
Yeah, I'll go. Um, I, I, I think like many of us, you know, here up here and even in online in the audience, a lot of us were disappointed in, in the outcome. As, you know, I saw it really for, for our community to be a rallying point. To put away divisions we've had throughout the community. Whether it be politically, socially, ideologically, whatever. Uh, and really rallying around a common point and that's our kids. Um, and it, and I experienced a lot of that, you know, on a positive note. And I saw a lot of positive that folks that maybe I didn't necessarily, you know, know very well or didn't know me. Or I saw other people with differing political backgrounds and may not have been uh, you know, interacting as much, interacting and rallying around this. But I still think by and large, we missed an opportunity to rally. And to um, again, put away differences for the common good of our kids, not only now, but, but also for the future. And, and, and that's a bummer. Um, I think it's a real bummer. Now, I understand there's some valid reasons why we had a lot of no votes. I completely respect every no vote out there. Some were saying it costs too much and it was just too much to the bottom line for their family budget. And I, I, I hear that. We're in a really hard economics time, economical time with, you know, record inflation still up there and um, so I totally get that. But I also heard too, you know, I, I think there was some um, conflicting, you know, issues that went on when, when you hear, get into discussions around the bond. And um, what I heard was, I, I think there's some issues within our community with just public education in general. In our state, in our country. We start talking about facilities in Silver Falls and then it blows up to something about curriculum in, you know, in the national level or in the state level or assault or problems that are really for another day, for another fight in Salem, right? So I saw a lot of that kind of come into, to folks, you know, in some of those discussions. And then, yeah, did see some folks really kind of get a little frustrated with one another and and, and so overall, again, I, I, I say all this just to say, I think we had an opportunity really to come together and rally and, and, and it unfortunately, at this point was missed. But I think we can move on. I'm, I'm an optimist. Uh, I know we can do something. I'm hoping at some point tonight, we talk about what next, at least on a high level. I'm not willing to sit back and, and say, you, we're, we're done for five years. We're not going to talk about a bond again. I think we have to pull ourselves up and um, do some more analysis and listening to our community and understand what, what our community will tolerate in terms of a bond threshold. What we went out for obviously was, was too much. And that's okay. Um, it's not ideal. It's, it's, uh, it would have fixed many of the problems in our community. We would have had a brand-new middle school for, for our five hundred or so, or four hundred and fifty kids. We would have had massive upgrades and fixes across every K, community. And we had ensured viability long-term for this building, this beautiful building we're all sitting in here tonight. So again, I think it was a miss, but we can, we can figure something out with good community input. I'm a, again, I'm an optimist. I believe that we can move forward. And I think, in my opinion, um, it's, it's something that we need to get on the ballot again, I think, within the next year. That's my own opinion. You guys are free to share and how, what you think. I think I'm nuts, but that's okay. I think we need to. One thing that I have learned that if we did try to do something in May, we will be missing out on an opportunity for the awesome grant. Um, as you know, we, we qualify for four million dollars from the state. Um, that will not be at our disposable for, at disposable for, disposal for May. Um, our, um, my understanding, our facilities assessment timeframe has lapsed. That it would not be valid for the upcoming uh, application, which is actually due in December. So if we did go out for a May election, we would not have that four to six million dollars extra from the state that we could play with. So something to consider in everybody else's thoughts and discussions. Uh, like I said, I have an open mind about it. I do think we still need to go for something in the future, in the near future. It's on top of mind of everybody's, you know, hearts and thoughts and uh, but I, I think we can listen better. Obviously, we had some misses. But I, but I do think we need to just, to, to stay on path and to move forward for the betterment of our kids now and for our future. And again, look for that point to rally together and try to put differences aside and come up with something that our, that our community can fully agree upon.
Thanks, Eric. Yeah, I'll go. Um, I think kind of what I, what I felt, um, probably just a bridge too far, just too much. I, what I, two or three days before the election, I was reading the Oregonian, Oregon Live. And um, an article, PG is going to raise their rates by at least seventeen percent this January. You know, people out there, they can't control the cost of food. They can't control the price of gas. They can't control the rent. They can't control their healthcare costs. And the list goes on. They can't control the PG bill. But here was this thing sitting on the counter, counter table that, that they could control. And I think that, that, I think a lot of folks just didn't even entertain it. They just, that, I, I don't have it. Now, now is not the time. I think that was a huge factor and I just, I, I feel it on my farm. I mean, I'm just like, holy cow, inflation is really there, you know? They, they try to tell us the inflation isn't that bad, but when you look at, look, look at the fine print on the inflation data, inflation, core inflation data excludes food, fuel, energy, all the things that we spend money on. You know, and I'm like, anyway. So I think we just ran into a bunch of frustrated voters. I wonder what, you know, and this is data for Steve. He's not here tonight. I wonder what, we have a couple of years left in the high school. What would, you know, what if we waited till then and said, we're going to pass a bond where your taxes aren't going to go up? They're going to stay at the current rate or whatever. The rate trickles down as the economic base expands, but, but essentially something that doesn't raise your taxes. I wonder what we could do for that. That's just something I thought about. But just one thing we really have to think about here in this district is we're a little unique. A unique problem. We have two large buildings that have to be, that had to be replaced or have to be replaced. The Slater Street Building and Eugene Field were, have been ruled seismically unsafe and have to be, you know, just not cost-effective to rebuild. Along with, you know, most people pass bonds to expand their district because your tech, as you're growing the population, we, we have to pack, we have to build a new building because because the ones we've had have completely failed. And that's expensive. It's very expensive, you know, and I, I know that, I wish we could rebuild them. Don't know about Slater, I've been on the board for a long time. I would have liked to have seen Eugene Field rebuilt. I was kind of, I was attracted to that option. I actually voted no on that bond. I wanted to, I, I kind of wasn't intrigued by that, but I did, my arguments didn't win the day. But so, but, a for sale sign went up on that thing. And on the, you know, and we, and we entertained offers, it was in executive session, I don't think I'm saying too much here, and it happened twice, I think three, I don't know how many offers we got, I think it was two or three. And full-price offers, and there, in that offer, there's a period of due diligence where they can go in with their experts. And these experts aren't hampered by public laws or things that were, you know, requiring to pay, you know, union wages and all that stuff. They can come in there with, with whatever ingenuity and expertise they would like. And, and I was really intrigued by this because I'm like, what's the building gonna be? Is it a McMinnons? What's it gonna be? What's it gonna be? That was my hope. And there was never a counteroffer. After their due diligence period, after their experts, they completely withdrew the offer. And we moved on to the next one. There was never a counteroffer, there was never a negotiation. They, every one of those people and their experts said, we can't do anything with this That's, anybody in this room could have gathered a bunch of experts and financial people and purchased that building, but no one did. They said, we can't do nothing with it. That's what happened to Eugene Field. That's what happened to the saga of Eugene Field, and I would have loved to see it rebuilt, but when, out there in the public, it, it just didn't happen. And that's a little history that I, that I know. And I, but we still have a lot of things we get, we gotta consider in this, we, we want, we want Silverton, we want Silver Falls, we want Scotts Mills, we want our places to be Mayberry, but we don't wanna have these large industrial parks to help expand our tax base and pay for these things. I think Portland, I think their school tax rate is like somewhere in the $2 per thousand, but they're taxing skyscrapers, hotels, concert halls. We don't have that here. And so in order to have nice facilities, we're gonna have to either, we need to just come up with some money. So, I don't know, lots, lots to think about, lots of questions I got for, for Scott and Steve, all, you know, looking forward to some information on the work sessions. So, thank you.
Thanks Tom.
Not sure where to start, I've got a lot, a lot of thoughts, and I'll try and, try and pare them down. This being my first real foray into social media, it was quite eye-opening, and it was both heartening and disheartening. You know, heartening to see so many, so many people participating, so many people having honest and civil dialogue. It was really disheartening to see how much, I, I don't even like the term disinformation or, it's just bad information, just things that are, were, were put out over and over and over again with a seeming disregard for the, the true facts, or for any kind of historical accuracy, or an understanding of, you know, school budgets, or an understanding of school funding, and understanding of, you know, construction, or, or buildings, or, or our own history. And, but it was heartening to see people like Kyle Palmer, you know, just really calmly and, and carefully lay out, you know, responses, and I, I think that made a difference, and so that was, was heartening. But I, I think that even with all of that effort, that it just seemed like, because these things kept coming up and up and up, it seemed like there's a, a group out there that maybe, you know, isn't reachable. Maybe one-on-one, it would be possible, but certainly not on Facebook. And I also learned that Facebook certainly tempts a person towards impulsive response. And, you know, I went back and read posts, fortunately, I was restrained somewhat, but I went back and reread posts that I was wanting to fire off a quick response to, and I realized several times, oh, I misread, I didn't quite see the point that was being made. And if I, if I had responded back, I probably would have started, you know, a fistfight. And of course, we saw lots of examples of that. But, but I, you know, I've done this a long time. In 2013, 2014, we had real similar efforts put in, and it just, I really lament the, the unbelievable amount of time that our volunteers had put in to try and find a solution. I see a lot of people out there that think they have the silver bullet, but I guarantee you, they do not. It is gonna take a compromise of our community, it is gonna take a lot of money. Those couple things, I know. How we're gonna get there, I'm, right now, feeling like maybe we can't, but maybe give me a little more time, and I'll be optimistic. I think we've got a lot of good people in our community that, that will take up the mantle. I'm, I'm worried that some of our awesome volunteers, I don't wanna name them here because I would miss many, but we had some amazing volunteers, and I hope we didn't, we didn't burn them out, because this is gonna be even more of a marathon than it has been. It'll be an ultra marathon. I, I doubt that going out again in May, I don't know that that would give us enough time to really evaluate and to come up with, you know, the, the next thing. It just, it feels like it, it's gonna take more time, but I don't know, I guess I'm, I'm hoping to, I think that's something we need to look at. What, what kind of time do we need? And look at whether or not it does need to correspond with the dropping off of, of, you know, the existing bond, and really think about some of those things hard. So, I don't know, that's, I guess I did ramble, I didn't really...
That's good. No worries.
Those are my thoughts.
I don't think you ramble. That was good.
Thank you.
Phil, Josh?
I, I'll go. On, on this, I felt there was, I felt an unfortunate side effect besides we haven't fixed anything, is I felt it brought up some old wounds, a lot of it from lack of information in a lot of cases. But I, I've referenced this, a few people I've talked to talking about an us/them, and I think more than dollar amounts, more than what a building looks like or doesn't look like, or whether we're reconstructing a building, or building one new, or whatever, we've gotta be part of here, we've gotta be part of getting rid of an us/them and making it a we. I, for one, I don't care which side of defense you are on, I'm sick and tired of hearing about town this, or rural this, or whatever. We're Silver Falls School District, for goodness sakes, and we can debate here all we want about how it got that way, but the bottom line is, we here within Silver Falls School District didn't have a choice. And we got, we got put in and made Silver Falls School District. We were just, I've, you know, I've been involved in education forever, and we were, if not, we were certainly one of the last of the union high school districts in the state to combine. I couldn't tell you that we were the last, but I know we were one of the last, because everybody was holding out, hoping the state would change how they were doing it. But they didn't. They, they made it mandatory that every district had to be a K-12 district. And soon as you did that, then Bethany, or Butte Creek, or Monitor, or whoever, couldn't exist anymore, until they became a K-8, a K-12. And so that's just a real quick history, and a lot of people don't understand that. They think it's a, something that was done to them by local people. It didn't happen that way. And, and there are good people all over our district, and one common thing that I found in my talks with people leading up to the election, and certainly in my conversations with people after the election, is there really aren't very many people out there, I don't think, that don't think we need to take care of the middle school situation, and don't think that our buildings need to be worked on. I've run in, I don't know about the rest of you, but I've run into, now, where the difference comes is the how-to, or how much, that's been a common theme, is the quantity. And a general theme also that I've heard is lack of information. You know, we, we sit here and we, we talk about all these different committees that we've had over the years, which people have, they've given hours, totals out to days and weeks of their lives to doing things. But, but part of it has been to, how much of that was directed narrative? How much of it was we really getting honest, straight, what the people want? And the bottom line is, this district belongs to the people that are asking to vote. That's who it belongs to. And we need to genuinely listen to their ideas, and we can't say, we have a tendency, it's human nature, we have a tendency, we pull in the people that we think are gonna agree with us a high percentage of the time, and we write off some way the people we don't think are gonna agree with us a high percentage of the time. And we can't do that. We've got to listen, and I personally would like to see us as a board, set up some way, a town hall meeting-type situation maybe, or something along those lines, of where we're getting genuine input from each and every corner of this district. And I may not enjoy it personally, but I can handle if somebody wants that we've put up there to give an opinion, I can handle it if they wanna call me an SOB. Not that they should or anything else, but I can handle it. And, and so I, I, I think sometimes we're fearful of getting the very information we need to be successful. I don't know if that makes any sense, or if I'm saying what I wanna be saying, but, but I think we, we can't be afraid to hear the truth, and that is, is what people, it, take all the people that are in this room right now, we'd probably struggle to come to an agreement on where to go to eat, or what favorite TV show, or best movie ever, I don't care what topic you want. It, it's not gonna happen, that we're gonna, but it certainly can't happen if we don't get, and I know in our group here, and group as a community as a whole, Josh, or Jennifer, or whoever, you're gonna say something in, in a roundtable-type discussion we're talking about, and I'm gonna go, huh, I never thought of looking at it that way. And you're also gonna maybe say something, and I'm thinking, what were they thinking? You know, but we, we've gotta be able to do that, to glean out the best. And I feel sometimes we're hampered and, and don't get to that point of where we can, I call it, do our job, and, and take the responsibility. I think too often, we fall back on, this group told us this, this group told us that, and it, yeah, if you wanna put it in, those of you that have children, if you wanna put in this, you know, it gets pretty easy pretty soon, well, mom said, or dad said, instead of actually thinking of a good reason why they can't or can do something. And so I think we need to get more genuine communication. As far as ideas on voting, I personally, I think, I think the sooner the better we can get out there. I, I would like, like Tom, I think it was mentioned, I would like to know some figures on what we can do as far as bridging. So we're talking with real information as far as bridging a couple of years, if we need to bridge a couple of years, or don't we have to, how things could be structured, taking a look at replacing money that is already, you know, keeping the idea of a straight line, in other words, let's pick a number, it's $2,000, what can we do with that continuing down the road, instead of increasing, what can we get for that? I think there's support out there all across our district of realizing that there's needs to be something done with the middle school situation, regardless whether their kids are gonna go there or not. And I think there's, I think there's genuine, but I think there's also real concerns about how efficient we're being. I think we need to take a deep dive as a board, looking at how is the finances structured in our maintenance part of the budget? In other words, where is that money actually going? And how's it being divided up? And maybe there's absolutely nothing we can do, or maybe there's some major tweaks that could be done there that could help for down the road, keeping some of these little things a bit, build into big things from happening in the future, because we need to take the big picture. But when we have groups we put together, we tell them consolidation, or we tell them this is, or that is completely off the table, it stifles real communication from people. And we need to really listen. So, that's my soapbox.
Thanks Phil.
I'll go. At the risk of doing my best man's speech and speaking from the heart, which could get me in trouble, I have a lot of thoughts, because I can't shut my brain off thinking about this one. I'll start with social media. Like, I read everything, and it's tough. And the reason I don't use it or go on it is because I firmly believe it's exactly the thing that's destroying us. I'm guilty of confirmation bias in my affirmative biases, that's what the whole algorithm's built on, puts you around with people that say the same stuff you like so you stay engaged. And I saw that happen with this bond. Oh, it, obviously, it can be done for cheaper, and somebody throws out a number, go, see? See what it said? It can be done cheaper. Or, I don't trust them, someone said something, and maybe it was never true, but now you just affirmed their opinion that so-and-so was distrustworthy, not trustworthy. And I, and then you see, well, we should close down those schools and bring them in town. Like, see, they do wanna consolidate our schools. And we're just going back and forth, and it kills me, man, I don't know what to do about it. I'll tell you this, some numbers, we can't lose a middle school. We have, last of October 1st, 440 kids in there. I think today is like around 452. Where are you gonna put 452 6th, 7th, and 8th graders in our district? I did the math, excluding Robert Frost and Mark Twain, conceding they still stay K-5s. If you filled every school to max capacity, there's still 202 kids that don't have a place to go. What do we do? You say consolidate schools, you still gotta pay for a school to consolidate, that'll never pass. So my solution is, we have to find out why. The people that voted no, don't hate kids, maybe they literally can't afford it. Maybe they do have trust issues. Okay, we need to know why though, and figure it out, and don't make them feel bad for saying no. We had so many listening sessions and opportunities for people to talk, they didn't. Probably because everybody that we got together in a group that were at those listening sessions were for schools, or say they didn't agree with anything we said, they're not gonna say no in front of 100 of their peers just to get booed. It's not the popular opinion to say you're not gonna vote for it. So how do we hear it? So how do we hear it? We missed by like nine percent, ten percent? How do we miss by that much? All the phone polls? I'm just like, just flabbergasted that we were that far off. Or we said something that pushed people that far apart. So we have to talk, we have to talk in love, we have to be decent to people that we disagree with, or we're never gonna get this done. And I have a lot of people that I talked to that were no's, perfectly fine, I just wanna know why, and I still love you. It's okay, I just, I need to know why, 'cause I think our kid, I think we can figure this out. As far as going forward, I mean, I would love to put this thing in May, but I don't know how much it costs to put something on the bond or the ballot. I don't know if it's like a school board member and it's relatively cheap. I do feel like we have some momentum. I was very grateful, a community member emailed the board and said, hey, I was a no, but I still wanna think we need a middle school, I think we can get this done. That's what we need. And you know what, give them a hug, because they're, wanna be part of the solution. There are those people out there in the community, I know many of them, like, never again am I giving this doc, the, the, I don't believe in public schools anymore. I'd like to see them go away. Okay, how many do we have? Maybe we, maybe this isn't possible, but we need to find out. And maybe we can't. But I just encourage all of us to like, I, I think our board does a good job. Speak in love to people, it'll probably invite better communication, we'll get better data, we might, and we'll hope that we can get this done. That's my best man's speech.
Chairman, if I can reiterate here, one thing that when Josh was talking, I thought, one, one piece, comment, besides the amount as being a common theme amongst people, you know, that, that were yet to be convinced, but thought we had a need, but besides the amount, was lack of, and some are gonna rile up when they hear this, but lack of information. But what they meant when they said that was lack of actual facts that they wanted to know. And what ended up happening, and those of us that could see on social media and some places like that, what happens when you do not have a bunch of accurate information of that void gets filled with people's guesses? And that's part of my, my theory that we, we need to have, have those facts out there and available, you know, where a person can look and see this is the capacity of this building, or this is the age of that building, or this is the exact figures on, this is what it's gonna cost me for the next twenty-five years, or whatever area it is. But common things that people are wanting to know, and we saw plenty of them, especially as the election went along, people were wanting to know and, and drove them and wanting to know, and make that readily available instead of the telling them what we think they wanna hear, sort of approach, and so. But filling that void is what happens and then makes for misinformation going out there.
Yeah, one of the things that I, people really believe is that we're going to grow, when actually we're projected to not grow. So we really aren't trying to add capacity anywhere, and that was a big, people couldn't really get over that, right, well, why are we not making the middle school, you know, bigger? And, and some people thought that we need to make the middle school bigger because they believe that consolidation is the smart way to go, right? And so that, that, that was a clear theme that I saw. I, the too much money was obviously a big one. Some people commented on, well, the district needs to figure out what the wants versus the needs are, so I heard that a lot. Personal financial hardship, that, you know, was, is obviously a understandable position to be in. Some people thought that the bond should be more, a higher amount, and the, the difference should be distributed more evenly to the, the outlined schools. So those two things are mutually exclusive. And then like Owen said, this, there's, you know, everybody thinks they've got a silver bullet. They, they, they don't understand necessarily that, that there are a lot of people out there who have their own specific formula for what is going to pass, but that's gonna rule out a whole bunch of people who voted ye- yes, they're gonna change their vote, you know? Some people, yeah, I guess that's that, those were the major themes that I, I saw. People thought that we needed a smarter plan for the future, consolidation came up, and then that need for, to provide capacity, but, but we, you know, maybe need to, to look more at our population study to get that information, you know, out there, or, or reevaluate those facts if need be. The turnout was really high.
It was for off, off year one issue.
People knew we had a bond.
Yeah, no doubt, they did.
Um, I, the thing that is hard about it is that the division piece, like I, I, like Erin, I, I hoped that it was, be something that we, that people could rally around, and, and, and there was, there were, there was a lot of unity in general for the, on the supporter side, and I think that that was positive. Silverton Middle School is kind of the, like, we have to have a solution, or else the whole district and the way we do business is in jeopardy. And I got criticized for saying that. And it's the truth. And so that piece, I don't, I don't, I don't know, a better way to explain that, but that, we, we have to do something, so talking about May or not May, my thoughts are around costing things out, could we, 'cause we've already put a bunch of resources into this, so can we, I know that the, so we, we had seventy-five million in the bond for replacing the middle school and any, everything that was gonna happen on that campus, that, that number I don't think we can use anymore. I think that that's probably going to go up. Now, would that new dollar amount fit within Tom's idea of waiting until the bond falls, drops off, the current bond drops off, and trying to keep a, a new bond, float a new bond that keeps that same level? Could we, would that even provide for Silverton Middle School is my question? I don't.
I don't know, those are just questions I, I don't.
Yeah, and I think that more will come when Scott explains, you know, his, he gives us his presentation. But if we could take the costing that's already been done and then do cost, put a cost escalation factor in there, that would work for a May ballot, you know, maybe. I, I might be able to, to support that. But would it pass? I don't know.
Can we miss out on the awesome grant?
Yeah, and.
But you're also, there's trade-offs to that too, as far as the, talking about the awesome grant, because you, other expenses may offset it or, or whatever. And one thing that came up too is lack of, and this is back to my facts, the lack of specifics. You know, it's hard for people to vote for something that they're not a hundred percent sure what they're buying. And being more specific, I, I, I went, just a point of interest, I went back to our successful bond. And you look at, and even in the ballot language on that, it, it listed out number of classrooms, an auditorium. It, it, it gave a picture, a mental picture when you looked at it, you could wrap yourself around, oh, this is what I'm buying. Instead of just, it did say finish the high school. It, you know, it had those specifics in it. And so like that, you know, and as far as putting together numbers, I think, I think we need to look at real, at, at the real options instead of discounting. You know, there's been things put out there as far as, and, and, you know, some people have had the thoughts as far as, you know, whether it be building something that's built off-site and brought in, or whether we build from the ground up, or whether we revitalize slate or whatever, but a realistic look at each of those and just what are the cost? And a little more, you know, looking, going to actual, you know, I would hope maybe we could get some big contractors in our area to, to at least look at them, ones that we, we consider reliable and everything to give us more ballpark, instead of, and they're fine groups, they're great services, what they provide. But it's a little tough to grasp, you know, a comparison of going in Bethel School District, for example, looking at, you know, and comparative, well, is it comparative, you know, for a, a more modest sounds too, land maybe, but, but, you know, not Taj Mahal, I'll use an example, any of you have been by Sherwood High School, that thing, that is a palace and great be, piece of pride there. But I'm not sure that same space couldn't have been done less and still not look bad. And so that's what people worry about, I think, when they hear numbers that are from a consultant that is comparing one school to another, one district to another. And so how true are the costs, really? And so when the number's thrown around, and so we've got plenty of big outfits within a fifteen mile radius of us that build at Oregon State and everywhere else, you know, campuses and build multimillion dollar projects. Maybe some of them would be willing to give us not a bid, but some constructive, real good estimates to go by, instead of relying on, you know, what was done in Lake Oswego or something like that. I, and I don't know if that's, that's just a, that's just a question, I don't know, I, that's a question I've got out there, could, is that even possible?
Well, Phil, I, I did have written down in my notes fleshing out the SMS plan, because I, I agree on that point, is that people wanted to see a little bit more about what it actually would look like, number of students, that kind of thing. And the other concern that I have is that we definitely need a plan for a what-if situation for Silverton Middle School. That's gonna take a lot of our admin time. And how could they balance that with another bond attempt? Like, that's my concern, it's like, we're, we, we only have so many man-hours. And how are we gonna balance that, 'cause they can't do everything all at once. So that's just one other thing that I wanted to point out that might be something to consider.
I got something, Jennifer, that's okay? Or Derek, did you?
No, go ahead.
It's just something, I wanna make a comment about something again about social media, I think our maintenance department took it on the chin. Had a realization today, not very many buildings that are that old look that good. A lot of houses that are older than that don't stand a chance to, I think, what we've been able to do with very little. So my hats goes off to them and for taking the high road too and taking a lot of potshots in this.
Agree, let's just give them a, everybody, I think everybody we can agree, that maintenance deserves credit and not discredit.
Jen, your last comment kinda sparked where my mind goes a lot of times, this worst case scenario. Uh, there's been some conversation we've had about, you know, do we go out for a bond in May, or do we pick another time? If we decide to, that's still no guarantee that that would pass, and so now splitting that with the admin time, I think we have to look at and start wrapping our minds up, plan. If we get to a failure point for the middle school, what is our plan? And I think that's probably where the priority should start going. And, you know, working on a bond either in May or, or down the road probably becomes, you know, a close secondary, but there's no guarantee that would pass. I think we're pretty confident that at some point the middle school is just no longer usable. And we have to be ready for that, and so that's where I think, you know, as a, as a board, I think that's where we need to start.
And that's where my mind has been for the better part of the last week. And I could probably tolerate, or that's not the word, I could probably support a tweaking of this bond for May that doesn't require a ton of admin output, if we were all comfortable waiting for tasking our administrative team with, you know, this what-if plan until, in, in, in May, you know, like, I, I, I guess we, we'll have to hear from the administrative team to hear what they can do. But that's where, exactly where I'm at, like, it, it's not, it's irresponsible for us not to look at how we are going to educate the students in the Silverton Middle School boundary, if we have to say we cannot use Silverton Middle School anymore. And that could be for safety reasons, or it could be building reasons, it could be 'cause we don't wanna put any more money. I mean, it could be like we have to, the roof might fail again, and are we willing to put more money into it again? So whatever the reason is, we need to be ready.
Right. Maybe part of that, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Let's say maybe part of that conversation is starting to figure out what those specific triggers would be like, okay, we've hit this point, and now it's, now we're done. I'm trying to identify what those specific metrics would be when we say either fiscally it's irresponsible to continue to put money in it, because the roof has collapsed or it's unsafe for students, but identifying those I think will help determine the decision ahead of time, instead of saying like, well, we're not sure one way or the other, but.
For sure, and I don't, I don't even need, at this point, that's even secondary to me, to the actual how, what will we do with the children?
Yeah. And, and also, at the same time, that's where almost sooner is better than later from the standpoint, we've done so much. You know, in some aspects, and we've kicked them around here, not enough in some areas maybe for certain portion of our voters. But there has been so much, there's, none of us are gonna deny, there's been so much done already. Not to lose ground on that, or have it be all of a sudden outdated and all this sort of thing. And get creative around the ideas of do we, and that's part, maybe part of what we should be talking here even tonight, but certainly at the next meeting or two, sooner than later. A bond maybe built around doing the middle school and X dollars for the most critical, and have those identified issues of getting us through in the other buildings. Not ignoring them, but getting us through in the other buildings. And then with the idea of long range, longer range or foresight out there, then taking a look at is there any buildings that need to just be replaced, or is there any buildings that would be discontinued, or really have a plan? Long range, or do we need to look at repetitive serial levies for dedicated to maintenance? And that sort of thing on a reoccurring basis. And, you know, what's the possibilities there, but get obviously the middle schools, I think, and this is where I say a lot of our no and our yes voters are in the same boat, a lot of them agree, and wherever they live, something's gotta happen with the middle school situation, so.
I kinda wanna add to something that, 'cause this came up a little bit earlier, was, was the, the wants versus needs, I heard comments a lot about that. And, and it, 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 it was kinda shocking to me, 'cause I'm like, okay, if you've been, if anybody's been following at least a little bit of the long range facility planning committee and, and, and the bond advisory committee and everything that went into that, the mantra of that, minus the middle school, the middle school is brand new, everything else is warm, safe and dry. We're talking lighting, windows, roofs, security, drainage, parking lots, ADA accessibility, which is woefully under, you know, needs help in many of our K eight facilities. I think there's this misnomer that everything was just gonna be like, it was all just wants, but the bond advisory committee and the long range facility planning committee over the last four or five years pared down all kinds of different scenarios to last four or five years pared down all kinds of different scenarios to get to that warm, safe and dry scenario. And so I, for the, for the, just at least for the public who's here tonight and for listening online, like, look, this was a warm, safe and dry, there was no wants here, this we're all needs. In fact, the needs were, were higher than the hundred and thirty-eight million dollars, much higher. And that just went too astronomically high to where we could tolerate as a community, obviously one thirty-eight's too high, right? So I wanted to throw that out there because that's not, that was, this was not a wants bond, this was a needs bond. But I think also too, if, okay, if we, if we do go to a, you know, I'm glad we're talking about the what ifs about, you know, number one contingency planning for the middle school, but also, okay, if we're gonna go out for a bond, I think our community needs to understand it's gonna be a much lower threshold. And unfortunately, most of that money's gonna be taken from our K eight communities in terms of investment. Now, our commitment is to keeping those, those communities viable long term. We've heard loud and clear, I believe in the system, I think most of us here believe in the system too, if not all of us believe in this system that we have. But unfortunately, when we have to find out what that new threshold will be, most of that money taken away is gonna be coming from our K eight communities in terms of long-term investment.
And you just mean because Silverton Middle School is the most pressing need?
Yes, it's the most pressing need and that's gonna be the biggest budget line item. Right now it was seventy-five million of the one thirty-eight, right? So whatever that number's gonna be, obviously one thirty-eight's too high in terms of a threshold, we're gonna have to unfortunately take from that K eight, those K eight dollars. Unless we somehow magically, we can pare down that middle school number, but I'm, like you, I'm not super confident that that number's gonna really drastically get cut in half or even come down at all. In fact, I'm concerned it might go up. So just by sheer magnitude of what we need to accomplish in terms of priorities, which our hearts and our minds are focused on, the K eight communities unfortunately are not gonna get the same amount of funding as this bond would have given them. And that's just a sheer fact, so, which is unfortunate. But that is a reality going forward.
Timeline for decisions, Jen? If we were to push this through in May, if we decide to, when do we have to make a decision?
We don't have that information at this point. Oh, you mean, yeah.
Well, other than March first.
Yeah, March first for the, to get it on the ballot.
Okay.
But Scott's gonna bring that, all that back, like timeline and everything back to us.
I, I would say, I would, I would love to go for just the middle school and then also do strategizing for what would happen if both we run out of finances to replace or fix our upkeep in middle school or catastrophic failure. We gotta, like you said, we gotta have a plan.
I guess the, the first thing is, you know, it's a cold hard assessment of the condition of the middle school. I think we've kinda already have that information in-house, just a summation of what we got. And you start from there. That's, that's where the discussion starts.
One request that I have moving forward, if we do put something on the May ballot or any, any ballot coming up that's still in my term, I would love for us, you remember the guiding principles that we agreed upon?
For the bond oversight or?
It was, yeah, for, it was for the project, like the, you know, the practicalities, right?
Yeah, cost effect, people saw that.
The one thing that I didn't press in that discussion and I, I would've, but now, now I think it's a, a good idea is the idea of whatever structure is designed, that it be easy to add on to in the future. Because again, I started to think about, well, what if we have a failure at one of the other schools? Where are we gonna put those kids? And I know that we have, we can't, we don't wanna say that we're gonna build a big middle school because then the K eights are gonna think that, you know, we're consolidating, right? And so we've wanted to avoid that. And I don't think we need to necessarily go to the expense to build more capacity than we think we will need. However, being able to add on to a building in a straightforward economical way makes a lot of sense to me.
That's part of that practicality piece that we talked about on that.
But it wasn't named.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't specific to that.
And so that's, that's one thing.
And we don't wanna assume.
That's right. That's, that's one thing I'd like to see. Phil mentioned a levy. I'm totally interested in pursuing that after we get Silverton Middle School. To me, it's like that doesn't even matter until we get Silverton Middle School.
Thinking out there from the standpoint that it, when we say focus on getting middle, doesn't mean we're necessarily in our minds forgetting these other issues and problems we have that we need to deal with and we need to figure out a way to do that. And another way to skin the cat, I guess you wanna say.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think it's, I think it's something that we do need to consider in that. I do, I do think that the, the, the social media chatter did bring people to understand that our regular general fund budget does not cover the cost of facilities maintenance. And I think that was pretty clear. I think there were some people who obviously, well, it doesn't matter, I'm not gonna say that.
It does cover to a point, but we're to the point of critical mass where it's not covering it.
That's right.
Where this bond would have brought everything up to the point where then we can be much more strategic and selective and, and proactive with the maintenance rather than just kind of like, you know, plugging every hole when we're doing that.
I know. And, and that explanation didn't hold water for some people. And so that's where the levy piece comes in, I think.
And, and that also gets to the point of, of, and somebody, I couldn't, Jennifer or somebody mentioned here, you know, the feeling of attack on our maintenance people and everything, which is, you know, those of us that are around it know that they're pulling off miracles in some of the things they're doing. And, and this sort of thing. But I do think we owe it to not just the public, but to ourselves to be able to look at that, that, that piece of budget and see how things are, I mean, I'm not talking about every little nut and bolt, I'm talking about the grand picture of the actual allocations and where it's going. And is there any tweaking that can do that to help improve it? Which isn't the same thing as saying the maintenance department is not doing well. They are doing, you know, and, and all this, but, but how about what they're being given? Is there any way we can improve upon that? And, and that sort of thing, so.
Anybody else? Oh, one thing that you said is like, you said if, if, if they've been following, well, they haven't been following, this is the thing, people don't follow until they get their ballots. And so it's really hard to soundbite five years worth of information into that short time period. So that's one thing that hit me in the face in this whole thing. It's like, whoa, now everybody is paying attention.
I'd hope our general public that maybe got more involved during this election or during this bond initiative, that they would continue to be involved, you know, and, and abreast of what we're doing at these board meetings. And as we continue to talk about this subject about, you know, what are we gonna do with the middle school and where are we gonna go if we seek another bond? I would hope that, I would ask, I would urge, and I would hope that people would stay engaged with that because it's the, the only way they can, they can stay in, in, you know, up to date as to really the truth of what the real information is out there.
It's another important piece about the sooner to better. We've got, we've got a certain percentage of engagement. The longer we're away from that, the more we'll lose it. And then you're starting all over in that area also.
Maybe, it's hard to know because some people think, oh, well, those yes people, they were cramming it down my throat, and now I'm really a no, you know what I'm saying? It's like, you don't.
My, um, the last two failed, the first bond to do the middle school failed. We pared it down, went modular, cut the budget way down, it failed by a higher percentage.
Yeah.
We cut the budget and it failed by, unless, unless I am misremembering, but I'm almost a hundred percent sure of that, that it, we lowered it down a lot and failed by higher.
And we lowered it by taking money from the outlying schools in the same manner that we're talking about.
There was a little bit, yeah. And we, and we went modular instead of.
Pre, pre-fabrication.
Yeah, pre-fab, I think, so. Anyway, yeah, that, that's a little history that I think.
Yeah, like I said, I don't have much hope for a May bond that just covers the middle school. I, I really don't, but, but I also can't say we, you know, let's not try this.
Might be something to pull for as well, maybe.
Yes, but then it's like how much more resources and the time and.
Catch twenty-two's all over the place.
It is. It is.
Poor Kevin's been waiting.
Okay, let's move on then. Discussion item which was eleven A on the original agenda, W E S D Budget Committee. We've got Kevin Palmer and Val Hernandez, who would, would like to seek a position on the Budget Committee. And I don't think we have any presentation or anything like that. We just need to kind of give our approval, I guess, that we are supportive of these two people who live within our district to join or be candidates for the W E S D Budget Committee. Any discussion on that?
I've been trying to find faults with Kevin for a good time now.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say that I, I feel like we are supportive of these two people. Okay. Um, the next thing, eleven B is board training. So usually at the start of a new term, we, in my time being on the board, we have had board training that kind of recalibrates everybody in terms of, you know, these are the best practices for the way boards operate. We didn't do that this summer because we had the bond. And we still have an opportunity. Dan has been trying to ask around to some of our attorneys that we contract with and to see if they would be available for a winter or late fall session where we would be able to have some extended time where we just talk about procedures and laws and rules and best ways to approach certain things, get our questions answered, cause I know a lot of new people have a lot of questions. And, you know, you've relied on me sometimes to give you the answer, but it would be nice to have an authority to give those answers. Dan, did you wanna say more?
Yeah, so I did have been in communication with Jolly Patterson, who works for Miller Nash, who's been sort of the person we've brought before the board on a time or two to advise the board. She was, I believe, in-house counselor, worked real closely in Portland Public many years ago.
Board secretary.
Board secretary, thank you. And so she is available and interested and we were looking at possibly doing something in early January because we do have that canceled work session in late December. So I did actually pin her down to January third or fourth, that's a Thursday, Friday, right before we kick back into the school year. So I can send an email out and get your feedback on your availability since you may not know. And I don't know, Jennifer, you wanna talk about interest from the board on that or?
Yeah, and, and you, we talked about like doing it, like what time of day again?
I think we're talking about six o'clock, maybe, we have dinner beforehand and then have like a ninety minute to no more than two hour session with Jolly.
Yeah. Are y'all available during that time, the third to the fourth, and/or willing? We can come up with another date, cause we, this would be something where we want, you know, everybody to be there.
Email us and I can get back to you on that?
Yeah, I think Jen's gonna do that.
I said there'd be, I think, significant value whether you're a seasoned board member or a new board member, anytime we can get additional education, training, being charged with education and training is probably.
And she would customize her, her presentation to, you know, assess questions that you have, policies you'd like to have her dive into, she would customize it for what you, what you would want.
And what I really like about Jolly is that she was actually the board secretary for Portland Public. So she knows what board, how boards work and she's an attorney, so she can give us that perspective as well. All right, Dan, that would be great if you would send out a poll to us about times.
Will do.
Thank you so much. All right, so the next item on our agenda is the policy second reads. I'm not gonna go through those one by one, I'm just gonna ask if there are any further thoughts. We've already discussed these once, any other thoughts that have come up on these second read?
Yeah, I have one, I'm bringing it up here. I think it's on, granted, not necessarily our, our lane, but the recognition, religious beliefs and customs, I just wanted to thank Dan for taking the time to kind of reconfigure those. I really like, we're able to kind of pull the best parts of all of them. I think I missed it on my first read, it's on the AR, I think it's bullet point, sorry, footnote number two, and mentioned something about like a group that might be praying that could be maybe prohibited. I think we might just wanna take a look at that language. I think, one, it's probably not enforceable or, or doesn't really add much value. But other than that, I thought, again, just overall, great job. So first page, second footnote, I thought that might be problematic for us.
Yeah, I did look into that. And so I'll maybe do a deeper dive into OSBA as to why, why that footnote, why that example. I think in the context of scheduling around major religious and cultural holidays and what that, that paragraph where the footnote exists, I think we're okay because part of this is the sentences that can be reasonably fulfilled during school activities and then give some examples. And the word may in the footnote, I think, does give us some flexibility. But I will, I do acknowledge that it, I mean, I'm actually just curious as to why that particular example, so I will look into that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Derek, for looking at that, cause we certainly don't wanna like go pick a fight.
Yeah, it just kinda, I read, I'm like, eh, probably worth a second look.
Unless it's like there's a case or something, that's the only thing I, yeah, thank you.
I think they were making some efforts to try to give some examples in there and maybe just, maybe it's too specific of an example.
Yeah, I guess like, I think of example of like maybe two or three students that were quietly praying over meal or something and were, how do you even enforce that and what does that look like, so?
Yeah.
Any other comments on any of the policies?
Well, I guess I have a question about that one. Don't we have kids that gather around the flagpole before school? Would this ban that?
So, no, I, so I think the, the purpose of this policy or this AR, this section of the AR is really around how schools set up their schedules and holidays and things of that nature. So the context is how we set up our schedules and making sure we're paying attention to those things. And then the, that second piece is including ritual or worship obligations of practices that cannot be reasonably fulfilled during the school activities. And then it gives those examples. So I don't, it would not preclude students at all from.
Before school.
Before school, lunchtime, you know, during non-instructional hours, that's not really what that particular section's talking about, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is now the second public comment time. So if he, if you'd like to speak, you can raise your hand or come to the table or raise your hand in Zoom. And this public comment time is intended to be specifically about things in the action items, but we don't, oh, but we, Stephen, we don't generally, it's, it's fine. We say that, but we don't always follow it.
We haven't.
Stephen, can you give us your name, relationship to the district, topic, and then are you speaking for yourself or for a group?
Stephen Floyd, I'm a district resident and a writer for Our Town. I was gonna be talking about the bond articles we were able to print over the summer. Just wanted to thank the district for the opportunity to tour the schools. It was a very unique and meaningful opportunity to get to know the district. So wanted to thank the administration for making that possible and the board for, you know, supporting those endeavors.
Thank you for your coverage. It was, it was very thorough, so we appreciated it very much. Anybody online raising their hand?
No hands raised online.
All right. Hi, Colin, welcome.
Colin Scott, lifelong resident, graduate, spouse, parent of all of the things. Again, kinda like you guys said, like Owen, my mind's wandering, so I don't know how well to come across, but I am gonna be one hundred percent honest. And Facebook, I think, is a necessary evil. And unfortunately, I think, as much as we don't like it, a lot of us do not like it, when poison is on it, something needs to be said about it. Jennifer, I, I saw a lot of comments, I appreciate that. Owen, I thought your comment towards the end there about the maintenance and all that was great, but to be one hundred percent honest, I, I wished I saw more from everybody and maybe. And maybe if I missed a comment, maybe I, you know, wasn't on there. But I think you guys, as the elected group, are the voice that needs to be heard, that's said, to squash the truths. Also, to Scott, I think, one, somebody brought up Kyle. When Kyle was mayor, and I think Jason does it from time to time, when something was on Silverney Connections, Kyle was the first to get there to eloquently have a response. And I think that when we start talking about things of this school versus this school, and this and that, and the maintenance budget, I think a voice from the top that knows how the process works to shut that down would go a long way. And again, I, I just totally being completely honest is the thoughts that are going through my head. The other thing is, we can have all the comments about Salem and about the state and about the process. If we wait for those things to change, because a lot of the people that are making those comments aren't going to go to Salem, aren't going to take that time. And unless we or somebody in this town or this group goes there, the changes aren't going to happen. And if we wait for those changes, it could be fifteen years, it could be thirty years. We don't have a sales tax. Nobody loves taxes. Without taxes, we don't have roads. The tax is clearly disvoted that we need fire stations, so it depends on what you want to vote for. We want to vote for fire stations, we don't want to vote for schools. Need them both, a hundred percent. Until the process changes, we have to look at what we have in the system we have in place and how we're going to make that work. And I, for, I'd like to understand on the awesome thing, to get that again, do we have to go through the long range facility planning and everything all over again, or is it just done for good?
We just need to have building assessments done. But the, the problem is the deadline is December first.
And that has to be done by like a consulting firm to come in and do that?
The assessments, building, yes. And that's go, that's a really involved process. It's going out to each school, it's interviewing the staff, it's, so it takes a while.
Another question too is, the bond advisory committee that was in place, can they continue and keep working with you guys on the next go-around and keep having these meetings?
I think the question, that's a question that Scott will come back to us.
Yeah, and I would say it's the board's pleasure. It's a board sanctioned committee, and, and that would be the, the board's pleasure on how they'd like to approach that.
Colin, again, Colin, my concern is, sorry, I'm going to take some liberties here. It's the time, because that stuff is all superintendent-led, and so if we're asking the superintendent to do that, plus come up with an exit plan for Silverton Middle School, it's like, how much on the plate can we do? So we'll have to consider that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the exit plans and all that, I mean, there's a lot of things. I mean, we've got roofs leaking at Mark Twain. We've got roof, I mean, there's a lot of issues that, we know the middle school's it, but we got to figure out something. So, thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Andy, can you identify yourself, your relationship to the district, topic, and I'm assuming you're speaking for yourself?
I am speaking for myself. My name's Andy Diocetus, I'm a parent. Talking about the middle school, the bond situation. Comment that you had made earlier, we need to do a better job of educating people on what it is that they're specifically voting for. I think it's also important to start educating people to, that are voting no, we need to let them know what it is that's going to happen. Fact that there's still not a plan for what's going to happen, assuming that, let's say we keep putting bonds forward and they keep failing, we need to know what that's going to look like, and I think we need to let people know that. I get the sense that no voters are, have been essentially calling our bluff for the last several times because they vote no, they feel good, they wipe their hands with it, and then the status quo remains. And for most of the district, the status quo is okay. My daughter goes to Silverton Middle School, and the status quo is definitely not okay for middle school students and for the teachers and the administration for, for the middle school. So until people really get a sense for what that pain is going to look like, and that pain is going to be spread district-wide, the, the status quo right now, they've been very comfortable voting no because they know that nothing's going to change for them. But obviously, that's, that's going to change, and I think people need to know what a no vote actually looks like moving forward. So I would encourage you all to have a very clear picture of what this is going to look like. Because we can't just keep doing bond after bond after bond. Like, there, at some point, windows are falling out of buildings, rain is coming into buildings. People need to know what that's going to actually look like with, with the next no vote. And, and then let's see how they vote, if they know that their, one of their rural schools is going to be bombarded with forty or fifty students spread across each, each of those schools. So I would encourage you to have a real clear plan of what that's going to look like with, if the next vote is a no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy.
Hey, you probably don't answer me. I'm Erin Scott, I have kids and I teach at Mark Twain. Erin, you mentioned that if we go for just the middle school, that the K eight population is going to take a hit. Why would that be any different than Mark Twain and Robert Frost taking a hit as well? I think one thing, and I think that staff feels it, I think that community feels it, is that constant us versus them. And I think things like that, like, it's not just the K eights that are going to take the hit. It's all the other schools that would take the hit. So I think, I mean, and, and am I wrong, is that?
No, I think you're right.
I mean, it is Mark Twain and Robert Frost taking that hit also.
Well, my analogy was, they, the middle school would be the focus and everything else would.
Absolutely.
So I apologize for the semantics there, yes.
So that's what I'm saying, I think we need to be really careful saying things like that, because.
It was not mine to.
Right, and I'm, and I'm sure it's what, but I, I, I went, I had to defend the in-town schools on Facebook too because I think that when we start saying, well, I'm going to get a better education here, I'm going to get a better education here, let's just remember that all of the schools are giving you pretty awesome education. You know what I mean? They may look a little bit different, we have different populations, but I think if you're going to school here, you're getting a pretty awesome education. But I just wanted just to reiterate that, that it's not just K eights, it's actually all the schools. So I think that just using verbiage like that more is going to help fix that, us versus them.
Thanks, Erin.
Thank you.
Anybody online?
No hands raised.
Anybody else in the house? All right, we will move on then to action items. Oh, we do have an action item where we need to affirm Kevin and Val. Would anybody like to make a?
I'll do it.
Motion, okay.
Yeah, I move that we approve both Kevin Palmer and Val Hernandez to the W E S D Budget Committee.
Just a quick correction, so it's, as a candidate.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
As candidates to the committee?
Yes.
So I'll change my motion. Can I correct it, since I stated it?
You're, well, you know what, we're not supposed to do that, but just go ahead.
I move that we appoint as candidates to the W S D Budget Committee, both Kevin Palmer and Val Hernandez. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we appoint W E S D Budget Committee candidates Kevin Palmer and Val Hernandez. Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
So goodbye.
I gave my.
Sorry.
A little clunky. Owen?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. Okay, number fourteen, future agenda item requests. Do we have any? None tonight, all right. Without objection, meeting adjourned.